Yes, sir.
Okay. We're calling for the Sparks City Council meeting of seven twenty-seven twenty. The roll call, please.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Council members Abbott.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Dare.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
City Manager Coots.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Uh, Mr. Abbott, would you leave his pledge of allegiance, please?
Yeah, please show me in pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to which it stands.
And one nation.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Lisa, we're gonna open up public comment in a minute. Would you read your statement, please?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, and thank you for joining us. Due to the social distancing requirements enacted in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Sparks City Council meetings will be hosted in this virtual setting until further notice. The safety of Sparks residents, employees, and elected officials are important to us, and we appreciate your patience as we journey through this virtual meeting together. The City of Sparks uses Zoom, a third-party app for its virtual meetings, and does not control its technical specifications or requirements. Your ability to participate in public comment during this meeting may be impacted by factors like the type of device you use, the strength of your internet or cellular signal, and the company that provides your internet or cellular service. The City of Sparks is not responsible if you are not able to participate in a meeting through Zoom due to any of these factors. For those watching and listening from home, general public comment will be announced for items four and twelve point one. If you wish to speak during general public comment, you will need to call in using the phone number or join via the meeting link provided on the city council agenda. Public comment will not be permitted on social media outlets. All participants will be muted upon entry to the meeting. If you would like to speak during public comment items, press star nine from your telephone or raise your hand on your computer tablet when prompted. You will be called on to speak one at a time by your name or telephone number that you are calling from. No video callers will be admitted to the meeting. When you are called on to speak for a public comment, state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name, and you will have three minutes. Please remember, any comments or questions cannot be addressed or answered by the council if the topics have not been agendized. Any person who disrupts the meeting to the extent that it is disorderly conduct will be removed from the meeting. Thank you again for joining us, and the meeting can now continue.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. All over public comment. Do we have some public comment?
We do, sir.
Okay.
Give me just one moment here. So the first public comment is going to be from telephone number five, four, one, three, seven, nine, nine, eight, nine, one. Your line is open. Please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon. I'm Joni, a resident of Sparks. I'm here to tell you that my husband and I support the police. I request that you not only fund the police, but add funding to the police line item, to add officers to the city force. With all the growth in Sparks, bringing in more people and tax money, I request that you allocate more money to the police force. Thank you very much.
Thank you for calling.
The next public comment is from Adrian Lowry. Adrian, your line is unmuted. Please state your name for the record and begin.
Hello, my name is Adrian Lowry. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Great. Uh, first, my heart goes out to the family of Makai Lee. I expect, at a bare minimum, that the council will show compassion for the victim of the shooting and their family, but much what I've seen is not compassionate. It was recently announced that Sparks Police Department would have a two-week turnaround time of shooting footage, but that isn't enough. There is no excuse for that length of time. The community has to wait to find out what happened to our neighbors and family members. Uh, sharing video footage does not help the person who was killed. So we need to, you know, start from that point. We need to start with an expectation that police will not kill our neighbors and focus on that outcome. At no point during the encounter was any police officer in danger. Every police officer thought that this would be their last night on earth. They were terrified of Makai Lee. Makai Lee was eighteen years old. Makai Lee needed help. Why was there nobody there to help him? Why did nobody have his welfare mind? Why were the police officers so afraid of him? We often hear the claim that more training will solve police violence, but we are never given information about the training. So we have full transparency on the training that officers are taking, including elective training. Many elective training sessions reinforce the concept that police should constantly view the citizen as a threat to, uh, as a threat to their life. That they have to be prepared at any moment to draw their gun and kill the person they're supposed to be helping. The solution to our problem with police violence does not rest in more or better training. We need to approach a crisis with the intention of helping the person. If someone needs medical attention, why are we sending men with guns? If someone needs, you know, if someone needs medical attention, why are we doing that? Why are we sending people with guns? Police are not qualified to provide treatment. They're not qualified to deescalate. And they shouldn't have to be qualified to do those things either. We ask, you know, we ask so much of them. It's not possible. It's not possible for them to fill those roles. So why are we asking them to do this? Instead of asking police to handle every crisis that they're not and they cannot handle, we have to defund the police and add funding to services that can actually help the community, can actually address these crises and save lives. You know, people need medical treatment. We, they don't need to be, uh, surrounded by men with guns. And then also, I wanted to ask you a question. Uh, have you ever been in a situation where you were afraid that you'd be killed by a police officer? I just asked you to validate on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian. Next.
And Mr. Mayor, the next caller is seven, seven, five, eight, one, three, six, five, three, one. Your line is open. Please state your name for the record and begin.
My name is Shelley Reed, and I live in Sparks. And thank you for the opportunity to speak. I think the City of Sparks may be the only agency in the county allowing us to speak during public comments, and I sincerely appreciate that. I want to speak on behalf of police officers, not only those here in our community, but across the United States. Police officers are our sons and daughters, fathers and mothers, brothers and sisters. They are black, white, brown, all colors, all in this, in, um, ethnicities. All face, male and female. They see the worst of humanity, the rape victims, child abuse, the abuse of the victims of traffic accidents, domestic violence, homeless victims, et cetera, day after day. They work holidays while we have meals with our families. They miss school events with their kids, birthdays, anniversaries, all of those special occasions that we take for granted. They work in all types of weather, under dangerous conditions for relatively low pay. They have trained that they are human. When there are numerous attacks on them, they have to be especially vigilant. I have been watching news reports of attacks on our police officers. Just this weekend, fifty-nine Seattle police officers were hurt in riots and because a bomb was used to blow a hole in the side of the precinct. In California, a man threw a forty-ounce bottle at the back of a police officer's head. In Portland, three federal officers were blinded by rioters' lasers and may never recover their eyesight. And in Las Vegas, a police officer was shot in the head during riots and is paralyzed from the neck down. And these are just a few incidents of attacks on police officers just in the last few months. When a police officer encounters any person, whether at a traffic stop, a street confrontation, an arrest, et cetera, that situation has the potential to become life-threatening. As a civilian, we also have the responsibility of keeping the situation from getting out of control. So when an officer says, put your hands up, then put your hands up. Don't reach for something in your pocket, your lap, or your, or your seat. Comply with requests and have your day in court. Many law enforcement officers are veterans. They have been in service to this nation most of their lives, whether on the battlefield or protecting us here at home. They are the only thing that stands between us and anarchy in the streets. I have also listened to the public comments to this city council calling for the beginning of these. Taking away funding for an already strapped budget department is disrespecting the thousands of officers who serve with their heart and mind with no regard for race, color, or creed. Can I finish really quick? And we're disrespecting the thousands of officers who have given their lives in exchange for others. As the mother of a military police officer, who has indicated an interest in becoming a police officer, I fear for him. But I know of his character, and he would make a fine and fair officer. As a parent, if you want to protect your child, teach them respect. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley.
Now, um, I am not showing any additional, um, phone-in or participant public comment at this moment. However, I do have three emails and one audio, um, that was submitted to us via email.
Okay.
Hello, city council members and Mr. Mayor. My name is Tanya Hayes, and I am a longtime resident of Sparks, a mom of three Sparks teenagers and a professor of economics at TMCC. I've made public comment before, and I've emailed with several of you. Thank you for that. I'm writing to you today with a few different points. First, I am really glad to see that you are considering a diversity committee today. I am strongly in favor of this as a way to make sure all of our residents are being considered in city decisions and activities. I hope you will vote yes to move forward with its creation. I also hope you decide on a transparent way to recruit a board group of members to this committee, which will make Sparks a more inclusive and welcoming city for people of different backgrounds, races, ethnicities, abilities, sexual orientation, and more. Second, as a follow-up to the Gwyn report on policing from two thousand and eighteen, I am asking that you also establish a citizens advisory committee to the police department. This was recommended by the Gwyn report and is currently being considered by the police chief. I hope the council will set up a timeline for a plan of how to implement the citizens advisory committee, including a transparent and inclusive outreach process to recruit a diverse and representative group of members to serve. Third, and also recommended in the Gwyn report, we need a survey of Sparks residents on our opinions and input regarding the Sparks Police Department. Unless we know how things currently stand, we cannot improve. As a professor, I get evaluated by my students every single semester, and it helps me to know what works and what doesn't, and how to continuously try to improve in order to best serve my students. We should strive to do the same with our police department, which serves our community. Fourth and lastly, I know there has been talk about a town hall meeting, which of course is harder to do during a pandemic, but can still be done on Zoom with a moderator and people sending in questions. There have been countless different town halls in our region and beyond over the last couple of months, and I'm sure you can do it successfully as well. I know you've talked about it for at least six weeks now, and I ask you to please set up this town hall meeting soon. Sparks residents are hungry for communication and conversation, and I hope to see this as the asset that it is as we work to make Sparks the best city it can be. Thank you, and have a wonderful meeting.
Thank you, Tanya. Next.
The next comment is from Pam to the Honorable Mayor Ron Smith and distinguished council members. I am writing this letter to show my support for the Sparks Police Department. The talk of defunding during public comments on the July thirteenth meeting and using the money for mental health. While we agree mental health, social services is important and should be funded, it should not be at the expense of the police department that is already in need of additional resources. The Sparks area continues to grow, and with this growth, we have more demand on our police officers. Everyone I know supports our police, and they do not want any funding taken away from this department. I enjoy living in our community and all departments I have had to contact with have been wonderful. We have lived here for more than thirty years, and it's a great place to live, and I would like to keep it this way.
Thank you, Pam. Next.
The next emailed comment is from Joni. I heard at the last city council meeting that there were people in attendance that wished to defund our police. I want to support our police and think we need to provide additional funding so we can have more men and women out protecting it. For, um, the audio, sir, I'm gonna have to, um, have the timer turned off so that I can share, uh, the audio with you. However, it is a three-minute audio.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Stevie. I'm a tax-paying citizen of Sparks, and I went to elementary school less than four blocks away from where Makai Lee was murdered. Yes, I want to be able to call police if I've been attacked, but we must realize the function of police. This is a message to former Sparks Mayor Gino Martini, whose overtly racist comments made in the last meeting are not forgiven. Police do not prevent crime. Police show up to the scene of a crime to try and solve the crime that has already been committed. You cannot logically solve crime by overpolicing. I repeat, the answer is not more police. You logically solve crime by providing resources to the most vulnerable in your community that are most likely to turn to drugs and crime because their basic needs as human beings are not being met. I recognize that funding for most social services is not done through the City of Sparks, but through Washoe County. But we can't do that is not a good enough answer when it comes to the reallocation of funds. The citizens of your most vulnerable communities demand collaboration between cities and counties and creativity and transparency and finding ways to accomplish this. We are great at collaborating with our sister cities when it comes to doing investigation on our police, seeing that our version of an outside investigation is having Reno PD investigate the Sparks PD. Absolutely unacceptable. We demand a third party not affiliated with the local police department, sheriff's office, or Washoe County, and in no way financially connected to any of the aforementioned parties be responsible for conducting investigation into the actions of our police. Recognize that what we've been doing is not working. We had major problems that have only been exacerbated during COVID-19, and it's about time we fix them. The majority of the people that our police come into contact with, those committing crimes, homeless, drug-addicted, are in these situations because of severe mental health issues and trauma. Makai's mother said her son has struggled with drug addiction at eighteen years old. This is not the sign of a criminal. This is a sign of a kid who is self-medicating because he desperately needs help. Pointing to the most program is not enough. Releasing videos quicker is a step, but it is not enough. Why we do not require those who are allowed to use deadly force on citizens to hold a four-year degree in behavioral health with emphasis in psychology and sociology is absolutely unacceptable, illogical, and absurd. This needs to be a requirement. Citizens of Sparks are putting pressure on city councils so that in the future, another kid like Makai Lee gets the treatment and services that he needs so that officers do not have to be put in the terrible position that they were put in. I end this with a reminder that as heartbreaking as it was to see Officer Patterson in shambles after the incident, which it truly was, at the end of the day, he unloaded five rounds into this young man in less than one second. And Officer DeJesus followed with another chew, another two, just to make sure the job was done. This all happened in less than two seconds. Under no circumstances should this excessive use of deadly force ever be deemed justified. We denounce the DA's ruling, and the fact that he can look at Makai's mother and come to that conclusion brings shame to his entire office and shame to our entire city. We must do better to protect our children. Thank you.
Lisa?
One additional one, sir, from Ardina.
Welcome, Ardina.
Hold on just one second, sir. I lost her. There we are. Ardina, your line is unmuted. Please, uh, state your name for the record. One additional one, sir, from Ardina.
Okay. Welcome, Ardina.
Hold on just one second, sir. I lost her. There we are. Ardina, your line is unmuted. Please, uh, state your name for the record. One additional one, sir, from Ardina.
Okay. Lisa, can you hear me?
I can hear you, sir.
Okay, so we're not getting any. We're not getting any voice from her.
No, we're getting, uh, we're getting Lisa on a, on a repeated loop, like we're.
Let me try just one second.
We're getting Lisa on a, on a repeated loop, like we're.
Let me try just one second. Okay, can everybody hear me now?
Yeah.
And no loop. Just making sure. Okay, so, um, we're gonna have to, it's something to do with the timer. Um, so I'm going to try and do it without the timer, and I will time it on my, on my watch.
Okay.
So Ardina?
It's something to do with the timer. Um, so I'm going to try and do it. So it, it appears to be something to do with Ardina's connection.
I, I wonder if we should ask Ardina to hang up and call back in, try, you know, give her a minute to cycle back through.
Yes, absolutely. So Ardina, if you can hear us, if you could please disconnect and then call back in and raise your hand, and let's, let's see if that works. Okay, Ardina has disconnected, so we'll give it just a minute. I'm not showing that person reconnecting yet.
Okay, hang on. Let me see something here. Nope, I don't have her number either. Is there anybody else on the line besides Ardina?
No, there is not, sir.
Okay, if she comes back on, we'll interrupt and let her, let her talk.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have, I have her number if you need it.
Well, maybe you could call her if you get on the phone and then stick the phone up to your speaker.
Would that work, Lisa?
It might, should.
It would. I, I think that would be really very challenging. I think that if, if we're gonna, if Ardina's gonna have an opportunity to speak, um, she'll, she'll try back in and we'll, we'll take her when she comes.
Yeah, and she can call in if, instead of using the Zoom link, or, um, she is more than welcome to email in her public comment also. Um, cityclerk@cityofsparks.us.
Okay. Then move on. Five point one, approval of the agenda. You want to pull anything? Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion.
Who to approve? Christopher Dare.
You got a motion by Mr. Dare?
I can, Abbott.
And a second for Mr. Abbott. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Passes unanimously. Minutes, consideration and possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks City Council meeting for July thirteenth, twenty twenty. Looking for a motion?
Move to approve.
Okay, I got a motion by Mr. Anderson. Ms. Bybee?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay. Yes?
Apologize. Ardina is back in, so do we?
Okay. Let's give her a shot.
Okay, let's try this one more time. Ardina, your line is unmuted. Are you able to hear us?
Mute sign on her, on her name down there.
Yeah, she's going to have to unmute herself now.
Ardina, you there? Okay, that's just not working.
All right, so if Ardina can hear us, um, the best thing is gonna be to email her public comment in then.
Okay.
Uh, cityclerk@cityofsparks.us.
Okay. I'll move on to seven, one and seven, two. Boards and commissions. Neil? You're muted. You're muted.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Uh, good afternoon, Mayor Smith and members of the city council. For the record, Neil Coots, your city manager, uh, here to announce three vacancies across two of our boards. The first two are on our building code board of appeals. Uh, we're looking to fill two vacancies there, both for two-year terms that would run through September thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. Uh, the first of those positions needs to be either a registered civil or structural engineer, and the second position either, it's, either needs to be a mechanical engineer or a mechanical and plumbing contractor uh, with numerous years of experience. Um, both, the applications for both of those positions will be accepted through five P M. on Friday, August fourteenth. And then the, uh, third position is for our civil service commission. We have a single vacancy there to fill a partial three-year term running through the end of June twenty twenty-three. Uh, in that case, you must be a resident of the City of Sparks, and applications for that position will be taken through this Friday, the thirty-first of July, at five P M. Anybody interested in serving on these committees should complete a community service application uh, available, uh, online at the cityofsparks.us website. Uh, to go to the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us/getinvolved. Once you're there, click on the volunteering for a Sparks Board Commission or Committee link, fill out the form, and hit submit. Thank you, Mayor Smith.
Thank you, Neil. Move on to consent item. Does anybody want to pull one? You looking for a motion?
I'll move.
I've got a motion by Ms. Bybee.
Yeah, I'd like to move, I move to accept consent items.
Wait, wait a minute. I didn't get a second yet. Charlene?
You don't want my full motion?
No, I got your motion. I haven't got a second yet.
Okay, I was just gonna specify eight, one to eight, three.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry. You're right.
Christopher?
Christopher's a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'm sorry about that, Charlene. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay. General Business, Presentation, Discussion, Possible Direction to the City Manager Concerning Establishment of a Diversity Commission for the City of Sparks. And that's gonna be Mindy. Is Mindy here? There she is.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Mindy, Fall Community Resources Director. I was asked by the city manager to look into the diversity commission that was presented to council thirteen years ago. There were two agenda items that went to city council in September two thousand and six and January two thousand and seven. City manager brought initiative to establish a task force to assist in the development and implementation of a city diversity plan, including a plan to invert, to establish a diversity commission. Unfortunately, the commission was not created. I have resources, and there's no documentation of what interfered with the implementation, and staff who may know have since retired. The only reasonable explanation I can give is that based on the timing of the Great Recession is the most likely culprit in diverting city resources. Today, we are seeking direction on whether or not you would like the city manager to allocate staff to evaluate models and prepare a recommendation concerning the establishment of a diversity commission going forward. Starting a conversation about diversity, equity, and inclusion within this organization and within this community would benefit the city. It brings new voices to the table, expands the thoughts and ideas available to decision-makers as they consider initiatives. Organizations that have taken a hard look at diversity, inclusion, and equity discover the changes are positive and transformative. They can lead to an organization with greater achievements, innovation, and smarter teams. If you'd like to implement a diversity commission, the staff recommends that you ask the city manager to assign staff research to models, research successful models, and report back to the city council for directions. I can answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Ms. Bybee?
Um, yeah, Mindy, so do we know, was there ever a framework? Or, uh, just the fact that we're going to form the commission that it never hap, did not happen? And so really, we're starting from, starting from scratch?
Yeah, we are starting from, from scratch. The original agenda items had very little detail on what the. The original agenda items had very little detail on what the, what the commission was going to do. So at this time, if we go forward, we would look at other organizations and recommend a new model based on current best practices.
Okay. And I, I would support that, obviously 2007, it's a different time than today. I've been looking through some information and I can forward you some resources from National League of Cities, has some really good models of diversity commissions, you know, equity, inclusion programs and how-to and what other cities, models of what other cities are doing. So I'd be glad to send that information to you, I just received an update this morning from them. I think it's important and I think that not just, obviously in this time, even more important than before, but I think reaching out to all members of our community, people who have not been involved in the past, to make sure that we see different perspectives because we all come to the table with different voices and I think our residents do too. And we represent 104,000 people in the City of Sparks. And that's all 104,000, whether they're in my ward or not. And I think it's real important that we're hearing from, from a lot of different perspectives. And I think that would be beneficial to the city as a whole as we move forward. So I do support this and I can send you some information that I have. Thank you.
Great, I'd love to see it.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Adams.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, our office is probably gonna get involved in this. So my question is, before we start on the different models, what is the goal? What is the philosophy? And is there a particular problem in the city that you can identify now that needs to be solved by creating this commission?
Mindy?
No, that would be what we've researched in the models. We would look at different things and part of it would be goal-setting and part of it would be the scope of the commission or advisory board.
So you're not aware of a particular problem that this commission is intended to address?
Well, we do believe that having a diverse workforce, a diverse community, and caring from then would help the city and improve the city in general.
I, I guess my question is, the City of Sparks is mandated by both state law and more importantly, federal law to engage in all different types of programs. Many of those are oriented toward diversity. This goes toward our hiring practices. This goes through our employment practices. And other than state and federal laws, that we are required to comply with. And in order to qualify for our own funding, what is this going to do over and above the prescriptions already in place with what the state and federal government?
If I can jump in here. Excellent questions, Mr. City Attorney, and we greatly appreciate them and they absolutely need to be part of a broader conversation. What I will point to at this time is that the makeup of our employee complement does not match the makeup of our citizenry in the City of Sparks. So I think we have an opportunity there to cast a broader net when we are looking to fill positions in the future. That's just one item that I think we can, we can look at. While we can't force people to come down and apply, I think there is work that can be done from our organization and partnering with our community to help generate more interest in positions in the city. And I think that, you know, a commission like that might be able to help us engage more broadly, more effectively with our citizens.
You know, as your lawyer, I'll tell you that an effort to make your workforce reflective of the community is going to get you into trouble. What the law requires is not that you have a workforce that is representative of the community, but that you hire the best qualified people regardless of age, gender, race, sexual preference, religion, which, as I understand, we meet all those requirements with the federal government every year.
We certainly would keep continuing to follow best practice and, and do that. Pick the best qualified candidate for the position. What we think this commission could help us in recruiting is just broaden our applicant pool in the first place. Who we see applying to the job is very much close to who we employ. So we'd like to have groups help us reach out to different people in the community and increase our applicant pool. So we think this is a real opportunity that we could really tap into some great potential employees of the City of Sparks.
So that's gonna be the primary goal and philosophy of this commission then? Is to do an outreach to, to get more people to apply for jobs here in Sparks?
It's not necessarily the primary goal, but it's certainly going to be one of them.
Okay, well, thank you.
You know, that was one of my concerns too. When you get into hiring practices, that we always stick with the most qualified person. That's a big concern to me, Mr. Dare?
Yeah, I just, one of the benefits that I see, and I, I think we need to be careful how we lay this out, exactly even what it's called, all those things to make sure it is a positive things for our city, but I think it's pretty much in every setting that I've seen, positive when you can get voices from different backgrounds and you can hear. And I think a safe place to have those conversations only help any of us as we continue to try to keep Sparks a great place. I'm gonna say keep Sparks a great place because I do believe we do a lot of these things internally. I think we, we continue to try to hire the best and that irregardless of any of those things. And so, however, we're gonna continue to grow and we are gonna continue to be relevant to a community. We, we wanna make sure that we're hearing the community and in that, I think this could be of help. If, like I said, I, I do appreciate that we're gonna, if we can take the time to really look at this and make sure we come up with the right answer. I don't think a cookie cutter from another city would work. I just, I think we need to evaluate what Sparks does and make sure it's something, whether it's a place where we can just hear these voices. And you know, I, I think sometimes the word advisory is, is a hard word to use because I've been on advisory boards and in the end, they didn't want my advice. And that, that gets, that gets kinda tiring, truthfully. And so be careful. I, I think we may be wise in what we call it because making sure that we are listening and that people feel that we are hearing them and that there's some things that we were able to walk in. But I would, I, I think there's some wisdom in us as we move forward, having a safe place, however that was called or what it looks like. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Mr. Crutts?
I just, I wanna kind of re-center the conversation too. We are here asking you if this is something you want us to look into and bring you back recommendations. We're not asking for any specific direction other than that. In, in terms of how to set it up, you know, advisory committee or, or whatever. We're just asking, is this something you want us to spend staff time studying so that we can bring you options to consider and to have a future discussion of?
Thank you, Neil. Ed, did you want to speak?
I'm just ready to make a motion if you're ready for it.
Go ahead.
I move to direct the City Manager to evaluate models and prepare a recommendation concerning the establishment and operation of a diversity commission for the City of Sparks.
Okay, we have a motion looking for a second, Mr. Abbott?
I'll second it with a comment, I mean.
Okay, looking for a second? Oh, did you just second it?
Yeah, I'll second it and.
Okay, so there, any further discussion, Mr. Abbott?
Yeah, so I think it was definitely a great idea. That's definitely what I think a little bit, long overdue, but we're making good progress here. And I think it'd be important as we do outreach, you know, we obviously make the announcements on our meetings, but that only hits a certain amount of people that's kind of in our circle already. And I think it's important for us to make sure we do outreach into the community to get the diversified board and make sure we're having diversity on, on that board itself. So I think it's a great idea. It reminds me kind of what we do with the seniors and that's going really well as well. But I think, I think it's a good step, so that's all I got.
Okay, any other further discussion or questions? We have a motion and a second? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously, okay. 9.2. Consideration, Discussion, and Possible Direction. Possible direction regarding possible use of the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, which is the CARES Act. Coronavirus, Jesus, Coronavirus Relief Funds out to the City of Sparks in the amount of $19,176 and 261, I'm so sorry. Okay. That's gonna be Jeff.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of council, this is Jeff Kronk, your Chief Financial Officer. So as you know, we are, we have been notified that we are eligible to receive about $19.2 million from the CARES Act. And just as a quick little background, the CARES Act is that $2.2 trillion mega bill that was passed by Congress and signed into law by the President back on March 27th of 2020. So a portion of that was allocated to to attack, if you will, the, the effects from the COVID-19 pandemic as resources that are allocated to state and local agencies. So our portion of that, after it filters down to the different states and, and different agencies, came to $19.2 million. We don't have those funds yet, but we are eligible to receive them upon performance of a delivery of a couple of items, which I laid out in the staff report. My intent today is to kind of keep my, my comments brief, but to get direction from you on how to, how we wanna spend those funds. Just as an overall picture, if you will, we are allowed to, well, we have to meet, I should say, three different criteria of what those funds would be qualified for use. And they're pretty broad, honestly. And these come right from the feds. And essentially, one is that they have to be necessary expenditures incurred due to the public health crisis from COVID. It also has to be for costs that are incurred between March 1st, 2020 and December 30th, 2020. Not December 31st, but December 30th. So it's a little strange that they chose that date, but, but there it is. The other requirement is that it cannot be included in our, in our budget that was approved or in, in effect, when, when the act was approved on March 27th, 2020. It can't be, a cost can't be included in our budget unless it was substantially used for, for a different purpose, okay? So those are the three very broad uses or criteria that we have to meet in order to, to use these funds. Kind of the last major category of, as far as a qualification is that we are not to use these to offset any lost revenues. So that, that's the one specific that we have to remind ourselves, at least today. I mean, there's a lot of speculation going on, a lot of conversations, literally as we speak, whether the, the Congress might repurpose these funds. But as we know right now, as of today, that we are not allowed to offset or to use these funds to offset our revenues. So you know, that's pretty broad. So what we intended to do today is really just get direction from you to the City Manager and his team to, to really work with the, the community partners that we have on how the best and most efficient way to use these funds are. So what we, what we provided to you is really just a bucket or several buckets, if you will, just kind of a conceptual ideas to think about. The list that we included in our staff report is not intended to be all-inclusive. Not by any stretch. There are certainly many more needs than our, than our resources. And that seems to always be the case. But we wanted to kind of put before you just some options to consider. When we were kicking this around as a, as a staff, we certainly came up with, you know, a list of expenses either within our own house or possible, possible uses within the community that were nearly double the amount of the $19.2 million that we received as, that were allocated to us. So you know, it's a matter of, we need to, you know, how do we wanna be smart and how do we wanna be efficient and allocate these to, you know, to the best use for both ourselves and our citizens? So the, the, the list of, of options that we kind of put in front of you today are really, even if I can expand that a little bit more, you know, thought into two different buckets. One being, you know, how do we pay ourselves back? We have either incurred or are going to incur millions of dollars in response to this COVID-19 pandemic. You know, so, so one bucket, if you will, of that is, is how do we pay ourselves back? We, we, not only direct expenses for ourselves, but also the regional expenses that we have incurred and, and are continuing to incur up at the incident management team, to which we're a party, both with Reno and Washoe County. So you know, we have some internal expenses and then, and then expenses that we're, we're required to participate in. But then we wanted to kind of broaden that and say, okay, if we look beyond our own borders, are we interested in reaching out to the community and offer assistance? Which, which certainly qualifies with, for these funds. And that could be, that's what we really wanna talk about today is, is are we on the right track? Are these areas that are interesting to you? You know, the, the ideas that we, we put before you today are, are things that are related to rental assistance or, you know, to mitigate, you know, rental eviction, if you will. Economic support for businesses. We, we all know there's lots of businesses that are, that are hurting as a result of this pandemic. And then of course, maybe some social distancing needs amongst the homeless. Again, there's certainly a lot of different opportunities to, to spend those funds. And this again, isn't meant to be all-inclusive. But we do wanna have direction from you today. And so what the City Manager is seeking is specifically direction on whether this is the right track. Is this too many, is this too few? Are there other things that we haven't considered? And then also he's seeking direction just to have the flexibility. Because this situation continues to remain fluid, we need flexibility to work with our regional partners to, again, to, to make sure that we're doing this efficiently and, and, and quickly. At the end of the day, we have to remember that all these funds have to be spent by December 30th. So again, based on the law that we have right now. So if we're working with an agency, say for example, if we're interested in, in reaching out to the Reno Housing Authority on a rental assistance program, if, if that's a direction you so choose to, to go, you know, we're, we're not sure how much they can handle in, in what period of time. So it's one of those situations, if we allocate a certain dollar amount and they're not able to, to spend all that, that money, we need to have that flexibility to be able to work with them and repurpose those funds before the December 30th cutoff. So, so I guess just to reiterate, you know, we're looking to make sure that we're, we're on the right track with the, the, kind of the conceptual buckets that we put in front of you. And then also seeking some flexibility and direction for the City Manager to go forward and spend these in the most efficient way possible. So those are my prepared comments, but certainly this is a time for you to discuss amongst yourselves or ask questions or give us directions.
Hey, questions or comments? Okay, none, Mr. Lawson?
Hey, Jeff. You listed on the analysis the reimbursement of city expenses, the regional costs incurred, the, the operation during the COVID especially. Then with the SARS program with UNR, residential eviction relief assistance, community business assistance, and then the social distancing for homeless population. That list, in my mind, is pretty darn complete. I think it's important that we, we get the residential eviction relief assistance out as soon as possible. And the same for the business economic relief for their rentals. Those are, those to me are the two things that are gonna, well, lack of a better term, they're gonna hit the fan pretty quick. And we just definitely do not wanna have people joining the ranks of homeless when we have the ability to keep them in their home or their business where they need to be and be part of this community. So I think your list is, is actually very good. I've, I saw what you had kind of allocated there. I get the need for the flexibility. So I'm, you know, without entirely saying what each dollar amount is, but I think what we talked about was over $5 million. Of that $19 million would go directly back into the community, which is exactly what that, that money is for. And, and then to basically pay ourselves back for the overtime and the expenses we incurred. So I, I'm just gonna say right now, I, I think it's a great list. I don't see anything else on there that we need to have. But I think it's important that we get it done in a sooner rather than later fashion.
Any other, Mr. Dare?
Yeah, I, I do think it's a pretty good list too. I do have some, a couple of thoughts though on some additions possibly. But I do wanna say part of, it's important we understand that the best way we serve our community is the Sparks as a whole. And so I appreciate that there's a portion of that going to us, so I, making us whole by those things. And I, I know I pointed that out, but I just, if anybody's wondering, you know, kind of on that, we, we have to make sure that we can serve our, our citizens and make sure the city is, is complete, it's part of our responsibility. So I'm glad that that is there and I'm thankful that that's a possibility. I do agree that quickly, quickly, we can't, especially with the rent. quickly, we can't, especially with the rental portions, I mean, we have some deadlines coming. But one of the programs, and I say this is one of the type of programs, there might be a couple other, I'd love to see if we could have some room for. There's a program called Dining with Dignity. I, I, I followed this from the beginning. A couple of us were there for the grand opening of it. Since that, that's been open only, only like two or two to three months, they've served twenty-two thousand of our senior citizens food. And I want to see, I mean, this COVID seems to be definitely not necessarily disappearing. And so for this next small season, I think if we can make sure that these people who cannot get out of their home have food, I think this is part of what, the kind of thing we can really invest back in the community, too. It might be one of the buckets that you're talking about, but I, I want to, again, if it's, this is one of the type of programs, there might be a few others like that that we're aware of. But I think hands-on, practical, right into the community, this would be one of the ways we could see that done.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, motion. Oh, Mr. Abbott? I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Anderson?
That, I just want to thank Jeff. Thank you as well as all the staff that worked on this. I think you guys did an awesome job of laying out some, as you said, the different buckets that we can look at. And I agree with what Councilman Dare said. Yes, we've got to make sure that we're, we're doing what we can to assure that the city continues running as best as we can. So obviously utilizing those costs. But then again, reinjecting funds back into the community to re-energize, re-energize it. The one thing, I want to make sure that everyone understands, though, and Mr. Martini, this might be a question for you, but could you explain a little bit about the sewage agreement with UNR, that partnership and what, what that entails? Because that's about two million of, of these funds.
I'll be happy to, Councilman Anderson. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, John Martini, your Assistant City Manager for External Services. The, when, when, when COVID hit, I, I think we all seen different things come out in the news. One of them was some research that was being done in several communities with regard to testing wastewater to understand how, how communities are affected by this COVID nineteen virus. We reached out to our partners at UNR, particularly the Nevada Water Innovations Institute, that's headed up by Dr. Krishna Pagia, asked him to, to put his thoughts together in the form of a proposal. And that is what's included on the list today. The purpose is to take, test the wastewater in our community to get, gain an understanding of how prevalent it may be. From that research, we can create community health models that indicate while we may be only able to do five or six or seven hundred or a thousand tests per day, this research will give us an idea of, of how prevalent it may be in the community using the testing. As just kind of a fun fact, when, when this started, our friends at UNR and our employees at Tom Wharf, Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility, our regional facility, started taking samples of the influence or the, the water coming in to the facility. So we've got, we've got, we've, we've got water samples all through this pandemic. I think it's going to be important, I, I think when you look at the list, you, you see some things for infrastructure, you see some things for our, our community that are, are kind of socially based. This is kind of the research end of that, and this is an intention to provide us with a tool going into the latter part of this year so that we have a better understanding of, of how sick our community may be or maybe not be. And then as well, if you think about it, we're pretty good at earthquakes and floods and other natural disasters. This is, at least in my lifetime, our first experience with a pandemic. It's probably all information and research that we get, get to better understand what pandemics mean to our communities will likely pay off in the future as communities are going to have to start preparing documents. We have a flood management plan, we have an earthquake plan. I can see in our future, when we understand this better, at some point, we may have a pandemic plan as well. So I hope that answers your question, Councilman Anderson.
Yes, thank, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions or comments? Mr. Abbott?
Yeah, definitely. I think these seven buckets are great and I echo Councilman Lawson on the importance of our rental and the business just getting that up and running sooner than later. You know, those are the calls that we're getting. I'm sure I'm not the only ones on the ears are hearing them, too, of ways that we can support our, our community. And that's definitely an answer we need sooner than later. So I could stress that enough. Yeah, that's definitely a priority. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Abbott. Anybody else want to speak? Ms. Bybee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with the rest of the council. And I think I really appreciate Jeff's work and the staff, Neil and the staff, on presenting a pretty broad spectrum of using this funding and dividing it into those buckets that kind of help us internally, help us in the community, help us look forward thinking with the sewer water testing to really gauge the effect of this on our community. So I appreciate that. And I do appreciate the fact that we're being very flexible, that we're not locking in dollar amounts to any one of the buckets, that we're open also to, if you look into rental assistance and it's being covered by Reno Housing Authority in the state and our CDGB, maybe we don't need as much there, but maybe the Dining with Dignity or some other programs that we have the flexibility. I think that's the most important thing. We have the flexibility with these funds, but we've got to get going on it and do it quickly. But I appreciate the staff work. Thank you.
Okay, any more questions or comments? Seeing none, looking for a motion. Mr. Anderson?
Make a motion, move to approve the conceptual spending categories as presented and direct city manager to work with the city's regional partners to determine the best use of coronavirus relief fund allocation of nineteen million one hundred seventy-six thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars.
Okay, we have most looking for a second.
Second.
Mr. Abbott? Okay, we have a motion second. Any further discussion? Mr. Croats?
Your clarifying, clarifying question that I have is, is it the council's intent to include, you know, funds for a food security bucket as part of our rental and businesses, basically part of the amount of money that we're plowing back directly into the community? Is that, is that your intent here today?
Who made that? Mr. Anderson? Did you make the motion?
I made the motion, but I, I agree with what Councilman Dare and, and Councilwoman Bybee said in that same area. I, I think food security would fall under that category.
Super. Thank you very much. I appreciate the clarification.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, on favor, say aye.
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 Oppo, opposed? This is unanimously. Ed?
Thank you.
Okay. Ron is gonna step away from the meeting, so I'm gonna take over for, for you guys. So we're on to item nine point three, discussion of possible approval of amended agreement with the University of Nevada, UNR for no-cost extension to the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility, Enhanced Dissolving Organic Nitrogen Removal Pilot Project Agreement. That's a mouthful.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor Protem, Michael Drinkwater, Treatment Plant Manager, if it's acceptable to you, sir, I'd like to have Mr. Minister present this item to you.
Absolutely.
There you go, Casey.
All right, well, good afternoon, members of council. For the record, my name is Casey Menser. I am the Treatment Plant Engineer out at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. And I am here today seeking approval of an amended agreement with the University of Nevada Reno. This amendment is for a no-cost extension to the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility Enhanced Dissolved Organic Nitrogen Removal Pilot Project Agreement. So our pilot project, this has been an ongoing research project at the facility. The work began, the onsite work began in February of twenty nineteen and was taking place at the facility for about a year. It just recently ended in February of twenty twenty. Unfortunately, with the COVID pandemic, the facilities at UNR ended up being shuttered. So our research team with UNR, they were unable to go to their lab from mid-March all the way through mid-June. And this delayed the final data analysis and the compilation of the final report for us. So UNR has asked for, at, at no-cost to City of Sparks for an extension of their completion date. This would, if approved, this would push the completion date out from October twenty-second to December thirty-first of this year. And with that, I am happy to answer any and all questions.
Questions? Charlene?
Hey, do we have any, do they have to complete this study or do we have any initial, initial data and results from the pilot program or is, is there anything now or are we waiting until December?
So we've been given a series of, of pilot project update meetings throughout the, throughout the duration of the project. And the data actually has been looking very exciting. We've seen good removal rates of dissolved organic nitrogen for, you know, for the variety of chemicals that they tried. But we're really waiting on the final report to see in terms of the, you know, the, like, the, the, you know, the cost benefit of each of the chemicals, what that means to Tom Wharf. So all of that's going to come a little bit later. But the results, the preliminary results that we've seen have all looked really, really great and we're excited as a facility.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Abbott?
I move to approve the no-cost time extension to existing agreement EC dash five-five-two-nine with the University of Nevada Reno for the Enhanced Dawn and Rival Pilot Project at Tom Wharf.
Second from Mr. Dare. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item nine point four, consideration discussion of possible approval of reimbursement to the city of Reno for Spark share of construction contract with Triumph Electric Company for the MCC twelve and twenty-four replacement project at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. I know Michael wrote these. In the amount of three hundred twenty-eight thousand one hundred sixty-four dollars and fifty cents, with the Sparks portion being a hundred and two thousand nine hundred forty-five dollars and twenty cents. Mr. Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Michael Drinkwater, the Treatment Plant Manager. You have before you the standard request for reimbursement to the city of Reno for a capital improvement project at Tom Wharf. This particular one is for the replacement of motor control centers, numbers twelve and twenty-four. Recall approximately a year and a half ago, we had all of our thirty-nine motor control centers evaluated. And we did, this is the third phase of this project, so the most critical ones have already been replaced. These are the last two that were in the critical category. So we're looking, as is customary, Reno managed the design, put it up to bid. The lowest apparent, or the responsive bidder was Triumph Electric, a local electrical contractor. This work is in the approved Tom Wharf CIP. It is anticipated work. The MCCs are at the end of their service life. They're not failing in an emergent manner. They're just, they just need to be replaced. We find the bid to be acceptable. There is adequate funding in the CIP for this project, so we're looking for your approval so we can get to work. With that, happy to answer questions.
Questions? Mr. Dare?
I'm actually.
Turn your face, Chris. I don't, I don't have the same screen Ron had, so I got to look at your faces.
Oh, you do get to see our faces?
I can see your face.
All right. And I'm ready to make a motion if you'd like.
Yes, let's have a motion.
I move to approve reimbursement to the city of Reno for Spark share of a construction contract with Triumph Electric Company Incorporated for the MCC twelve and twenty-four replacement project at the Truckee Meadow, Meadows Water Reclamation Facility in the amount of three hundred twenty-eight thousand one hundred sixty-four dollars and fifty cents.
Okay, looking for a second, Mr. Anderson?
Make a second?
Any further discussion?
One discussion, do you need that, ending on there, my computer just flipped out. I mean, do you need with the city of Spark share being a hundred and two thousand nine forty-five twenty?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Those opposed? Okay, most carries unanimously. Moving on, nine point five, consideration of possible approval to purchase information technology maintenance contracts and software licensing renewals from Summit Partners LLC, CW dash G, and other vendors as needed in an approximate amount of a hundred ninety-two thousand three hundred dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Who's gonna present? There he is, Rich Brown.
Mayor Protem and members of council. Again, Rich Brown, your IT manager, for the record. This item is for IT's annual software and hardware licensing contracts. We bring this to your attention because while none of the individual purchases themselves exceed fifty thousand dollars, in total between the two vendors, they each go off and above that. So we bring it to your attention for approval. And just as a quick bit of background and what these contracts and licenses enable us to do, they cover a lot of different things, things such as email security, backups, mobile device management, as well as just regular maintenance licensing through vendors like Microsoft and VMware. And often those do the role as an efficiency move. But for example, our backup process, if we were to do it manually, would often well exceed two full-time employees. But with the backup system we have in place, that often falls below, well below four hours a week for one individual. So these do a lot for us and we depend on them heavily. And with that, for this item, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. Donald? You had to unmute yourself first.
I'm not showing my millennia. Not on the self, that's, that's bad. I move to approve the purchase of information technology maintenance contracts and software licensing renewals from Summit Partners LLC, CDW dash G, or other vendors as needed in an approximate amount of a hundred ninety-two thousand three hundred dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-one.
Okay, we have a second?
I'll second that motion. I'll second the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on, nine point six, consideration of possible approval to purchase technology refresh equipment from Summit Partners LLC, CDW dash G, and other vendors as needed from the National Association of State Procurement Officials, value point contract and in approximate amount of a hundred seventeen thousand three hundred dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Rich Brown, man of renown again.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, members of council. This is the hardware side of IT's annual spend. And again, this, we tend to run this spending through with two vendors, Summit Partners and CDWG for the same reasons, though while the individual purchases don't often exceed fifty thousand, in total, they do between the two vendors. So we bring it per year consideration. This one, this year's refresh is currently, we're looking at sixteen PCs, the city eight laptops, eleven vehicle PCs, the types which we install in fire and vehicles, and as well as some miscellaneous networking and data center equipment. We have a slightly different plan for this year's refresh. The, considering the, the considerable telework effort we undertook in March to get as many folks working from home as possible, a lot of the refreshes is going to be transitioned to improving some of those things, since the telework was built using a lot of retired equipment, a handful of, of new technology purchases and just the old systems in general. We're looking to refresh to bridge some of the gaps that were created because of that for the telework effort. In addition to just the regular refresh work we do annually. And as always, with the goal with refresh is to ensure, you know, we're operating at a level of efficiency that's acceptable. PCs and devices, generally speaking, slowly degrade over the point of time to the point where they eventually near inoperability. So that is the purpose behind the refresh. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Charlene?
Rich, will this be complemented by the CARES Act funding? That we've looked at that one bucket to assist in employees working from home, so will that just provide? Just provide additional resources for the work from home IT component that we need in addition to what this, uh, expenditure is?
Uh, yeah, the, uh, the goal is eventually with the, the CARES funding is to completely bridge the gaps that were created between, um. The working from work process to the telework. Um, this refresh is, is gonna. It's going to be a stopgap for some of that, but the, the ultimate solution will come in the form of the CARES.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. Christopher?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I moved to approve purchase, purchase of technology refresh equipment from Summit Partners LLC, CDWG or other vendors as needed. In the National Association of State Procurement Officials, Maspo. Value point contract in an approximate amount of a hundred seventeen thousand, three hundred dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty one.
Okay, looking for a second, Mr. Anderson?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Nine point seven. Thank you, Rich. Consideration of possible action on a request to sponsor an amendment to the twenty nineteen Truckee Meadows Regional Plan where a site. Approximately thirty four point seven one acres generally located west of five 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 Highland Ranch Parkway Sparks, Nevada. To change the regional land designation from rural to. Tier two, amend the boundaries of the Truckee Meadows Service Area and City of Sparks Sphere of Influence of the site. And then, did I see this was Sienna?
Yes, uh, good afternoon, uh, Mr. Mayor Protem and council members. My name is Sienna Reed. I'm with the Planning Division. I've had a chance to meet some of you recently, but certainly haven't met you all. I started with this city in mid-April, so. Absolutely an unconventional start time, um, but I, I look forward to working with you all in the future. Um, before I get going on this presentation, I do want to confirm that everybody can see the, the full slides in terms of a shared screen.
Yes.
Perfect. Alright, so moving on here to the business of the day. Uh, this agenda item, request council sponsor. An amendment to the twenty nineteen Truckee Meadows Regional Plan. That's needed to expand the Five Bridges Project Site by a little less than thirty five acres. You can see the site here in Black Hatching. It actually totals exactly thirty four point seven one acres. It's also located adjacent to the existing Five Bridges Project Site, which you can see here bound in red. And that site sits just north of Highland Ranch Parkway on the west side of the intersection of Highland Ranch Parkway and Pyramid Way. There are three parts to the regional plan amendment that the Five Bridges Master Developer would like council to sponsor, that thirty four point seven one acre site. Not only would the boundaries of the Truckee Meadows Service Area and the City of Sparks Sphere of Influence be changed to include the site. But the current rural area regional land designation would change to tier two. As it stands today, the site is located outside city limits, outside the Truckee Meadows Service Area and outside the Sparks Sphere of Influence. The site also has that rural area land designation that doesn't allow for suburban development. The master developer wants to change these designations to make the site part of Five Bridges and develop single-family homes on a portion of the land. While expanding the Five Bridges Project Site really just out a bit to the west is a relatively simple request. There are a lot of process steps to do so. So in addition to the regional plan amendment sponsorship that you have before you today. The master developer has submitted annexation, development agreement amendment, comprehensive plan land use amendment and rezoning requests. None of those entitlements can be acted on by council until this regional plan amendment goes through the regional review process. Tearing is a new concept that was added to the twenty nineteen Truckee Meadows Regional Plan. So let me quickly remind you of what those tiers mean. The highest priority tier is the mixed-use core that covers downtown Sparks and heads out east to legends. Tier one includes mostly developed areas where density shouldn't be reduced. For Sparks, this is land generally within the McCarran Loop. Suburban development patterns are found in tier two and residential density here is capped at thirty dwelling units per acre by the regional plan. Geographically, tier two covers most of northeast Sparks. Tier three land is largely undeveloped or constrained within the City of Sparks Sphere of Influence. But this designation also includes low-density development in the unincorporated county. Outside these tiers and the Truckee Meadows Service Area is the rural area where residential development is limited to one dwelling units per five acres. And municipal facilities are not allowed. To give you a visual for the requested regional plan amendment in relationship to those tiers. The current Five Bridges Project Site is again here on this slide bound in red. It's located within tier two, which you can see here in the light blue. Uh, that encompasses both the Five Bridges Project Site and then heads across Pyramid Way towards the east. The site that would be added to Five Bridges is shown here on this slide, um, outlined in the darker blue. And applying this tier two land designation to the property outlined in blue would really support suburban development densities. Currently allowed in the development agreement for Five Bridges to expand over this new portion of the site. The boundaries of the Truckee Meadows Service Area or TMSA, which is shown in this, uh, thicker black line. And the City of Sparks Sphere of Influence or SOI would also be changed to include the site. So that was the overview of the request. Uh, these next three slides briefly go through the applicable technical review criteria. And then there are two slides that outline why staff in the planning commission believe the criteria can be supported. With the twenty nineteen Truckee Meadows Regional Plan, there are review criteria specific to each of the tiers. As well as the TMSA and the SOI, and those are new review criteria. The criteria for tier two and the TMSA are highly similar and actually overlap. So they're grouped together as you can see here on this slide. Considerations for these designations include proximity to other tier two lands, compliance with density requirements, which for tier two. Uh, is again limited to thirty dwelling units per acre and opportunities for housing diversity. Other review criteria address proximity of infrastructure, multimodal transportation opportunities and potential impacts to other lands in higher priority tiers. Such as the mixed-use core and tier one. The only regional review criteria unique to the TMSA relates to regional need for additional land uses or purposes. And an assessment of why that need can't be accommodated in the existing TMSA. For changes to the sphere of influence boundary, there are just two review criteria in the regional plan. The first focuses on changed conditions in the region and in the vicinity of the request. The second looks to ensure local government coordination has occurred. And here evidence must be provided that the affected lo- local governments, which in this case is the city of Sparks and Wausau County, have conferred. Shifting gears here to the analysis of those review criteria. Here it's important to point out that staff and the planning commission found the changes supporting the expansion of the Five Bridges Project Site. Are consistent with those criteria. However, they will also be analyzed by regional staff and ultimate decision-making authority does rest with the regional planning governing board. So first off, as, uh, you saw on the map, the site is immediately adjacent to tier two land to the east. Which encu- encompasses the current Five Bridges Project Site. If the requested regional plan changes are ultimately adopted. The site would support better circulation and overall development of the Five Bridges Project. Which allows for a mix of single-family, duplex, multifamily and townhome housing types that will assist in meeting housing demand. Infrastructure and public facilities would be extended to the site provided the next amendment to the development agreement is approved. And those facilities include sidewalks and multi-use paths. The proposed comprehensive plan land use amendment that would be heard by council after the regional plan amendment. Would apply the intermediate density residential or IDR land use to ten acres of the site with the remainder being designated as open space. That IDR land use allows for six to ten dwelling units an acre, which is much less than the regional density maximum. And lastly here, because only ten acres of the site would be designated IDR, this small amount of acreage and potential dwelling units isn't anticipated to have a substantive impact. To other regional designations. Staff in the planning commission recommends city council sponsor the requested regional plan amendment and you have a motion to that effect on this slide. So with that, I'll conclude this presentation and be available for questions at the appropriate time.
Someone was messing with my dealer. Is there any questions from the council? I apologize. I, I can't, I haven't learned how to unmute myself yet.
I don't, I don't have any questions, but I can make a motion if you'd like, sir.
Okay, Mr. Dare, go ahead.
I moved to sponsor an amendment to the twenty nineteen Truckee Meadows Regional Plan to redesignate the tw- thirty four point seven one acre site generally located west of five five five. Highland Ranch Parkway Sparks, Nevada from rural area to tier two land, amend the boundaries of the TMSA and City of Sparks SOI to include the site.
Okay, uh, looking for a second? Mr. Anderson?
I'll second that.
You made a twitchy move, so I said that seemed like you were going to second it. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Moving on to nine point eight, uh. Brendan or Chet, who's going to present this to?
Brendan? It'll be me.
Okay.
Okay, um, Mayor Protem Lawson, members of council, Brandon Sendall, Assistant City Attorney for the record. Um, the item before you is an offer to settle some new litigation. Basically, three, uh, or thirty thousand foot view is, uh, in October of last year. Two of our police officers in conjunction with the most team, the mobile outreach, uh, safety team placed a citizen on a, a temporary mental health crisis hold. It's called a, known as a legal two thousand hold. As part of that process, the subject of a legal two thousand hold has to, um. Get a, a physical evaluation either from a doctor or a PA or a, a certain nurse. Um, so as part of the, the legal two thousand process, the, uh, person was brought to renown for a medical examination. And he wound up attacking, uh, the nurse or the med tech who was working there. Uh, her name is Elaine Grundy. Oh, Ms. Grundy has sued the city, uh, alleging that the officers were negligent because they knew. The person was homicidal or suicidal and, um, that he, that they were negligent and not having him handcuffed during the examination. We have filed an answer in this, um, the, the settlement offer, settlement demand came about because, uh, our office reached out to the plaintiff's attorney to discuss dollar amounts and. Just, uh, get the ball rolling and we received the settlement demand. So, um. We are ethically obligated to present it to you. Um, you make settlement decisions, not us. Obviously, you've delegated that authority to. City manager recruits for anything under twenty five thousand dollars, but being that this is a hundred thousand dollars, it's presented for, uh, your consideration. Uh, I can answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Me, uh, just quickly a clarifying type of question. So we're pretty well very new into this whole lawsuit. It's probably a little early to do a settlement. Is that, would that be your opinion?
Yeah, I, I mean, we haven't even started discovery. We just filed our answer last week, so, you know, we'll, we'll have our initial case conference and, I mean, initial disclosures, the, basically the kickoff of discovery will be in a little over a month. Um, depending on exactly when we have that first conference. So, um. You know, we, we don't know information on, you know, any setups for, for, um, unemployment or, or workers' comp. Um, and we'll obviously get the, the videos to, uh, plaintiff's counsel, but yeah, we're, we're very early in the game here.
Okay, any other questions from the council? If not, I'm looking for a motion. Somebody, Mr. Anderson?
Move to reject offer to settle Grundy versus City of Sparks matter for a hundred thousand dollars?
Looking for a second? Mr. Abbott?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Brendan.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, we have, uh, public hearing items. We don't have any pub, uh, planning and zoning public hearings. We don't have any. Uh, comments from the public. Lisa, do we have some public comment?
It looks like we do. And I would just like to remind everybody that if you would like to leave public comment, press star nine from your telephone or raise your hand via your computer or Zoom app. And it looks like we're going to try and do public comment from Ardina again. So Ardina, you're, have been unmuted. Um, please state your name for the record and begin speaking.
Okay, are we there?
Yay.
Yeah, alright. Uh, for the record, Ardina Perry, Goodwin Road, eight nine four three six, glad to be here. Um, the item I was calling about has already been voted on. But I'd still like to, uh, give some input and say that I hope as we go forward with the diversity, uh, committee. And, and we have more and more civilians trying to run our police department. You know, I hope that we, I really like what Chad Adams said. I mean, I, I don't, we don't have a problem in Sparks and I've got. Pretty broad base of people that I deal with and, and sometimes I think that we try to solve the problem before it comes and then we create a problem. Uh, we've always had an outstanding police department. I've been a police officer in another jurisdiction. LEOs don't really need civilians telling them what to do. And when you sit here and, and you hear that you get sued if you shoot somebody. And you get sued if you don't restrain somebody. That's what you get into when you have the public running the police department. Um. And, and I, I want to straighten something out really quickly because it has been just making me sick forever. I'm sorry about Michael Lee. I have cried about the tragedy of what he went through. And I will share with whoever's listening now and with this council. I do not ever want to hear that our police murdered anybody. Because I'm going to tell you something, I've had two nieces murdered. So I know murder, okay? And doing behavior that is dangerous to the public and dangerous to the officers. That results in a self-defense wound, that is not murder. Okay, and it should not be tolerated. Calling our police officers murderers is not the answer. And I can tell you right now that one of my nieces that was killed was a person very much like Michael Lee. And she ended up dead because quite frankly, her illness took her places where it takes her and we couldn't save her. During the time before she was killed by another homeless person, uh, we called the police several times back in Indiana. They did the best they could with her. We need to realize that at some point, family and society. Needs to deal with people who have problems. It's not a police job. And if you pull a gun on a police officer, I think we have an obligation to that officer and that officer's family to not second guess them. And thank you for letting me share. And I know we have a diversity committee now. I just hope they mind their own business and don't try to be. Monday morning quarterbacks on the police department. And I like, uh, I like Ed Lawson's Zoom screen. Done? Thanks.
Thank you, Ardina. Lisa, do we have any other, other public comment?
I'm not showing any additional public comment at this time.
Okay. We'll move on to, uh, comments from the mayor, city council and city manager. Everybody, uh, Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, um, wanted to, uh, let everyone know, um. Councilwoman, uh, Bibi and I had a, a wonderful conversation last week with a group of, uh, Sparks and Reno citizens that. Um, are concerned about where, where we stand, um, in regard to, uh. The, the news we're hearing of different cities where, um, riots and, and explosions between police and citizens and. Um, in what, what the goal was to figure out how we can move forward with, uh, the understanding where each other's coming from. As well as, um, moving forward towards reconciliation as a community. Um, so obviously, we've been fortunate here in Sparks and we really haven't seen too much of that, but we want to make sure that we're doing everything we can. So kind of like the, the diversity, you know, commission, um, just making sure that we're hearing the voices of those that don't feel that they may be heard. Um, so I want to thank Elvira Diaz, Patty and Kelly Gallimore, uh, that met with us and talked to us and, um, as a result, what we want to do is, um, start, uh, um, a web-based talk, um, with the community, um, including these members and, um, it would be, uh, Councilwoman Bibi and I that would be on there, uh, to make sure, uh, so we're not violating any, uh, open meeting laws or anything. But what we want to do is encourage people to contact, um, Charlene and I and let us know that you would like to be a part of the conversation and we'll give you the link information to, to join us. It'll be, um, Councilwoman Bibi, if I remember correctly, it's August 11th at about 6, 6:00 PM. Um, so if, if someone would love to join us, we would sure appreciate you being there and as long as we're all respectful and, and listening to, uh, each other's concerns and thoughts, we would love to hear from you.
Okay. Well worth, uh, the time to do that. Mr. Chad Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Lawson, I would like to, uh, thank our Public Works Department and send out kudos to the elected officials that helped the Public Works Department in cleaning up the vandalism to City Hall, which occurred a couple of weeks ago. You guys went over and above and those Public Works people were out there working very hard in the hot sun to clean that up.
Okay, thank you, anybody else? Mr. Dare?
Oh, I'm good today, I know, I, uh, thank staff, man, we have a lot going on out there, but you're funny, Mr. Lawson.
I know, I'm sorry, I don't get the gavel too often, so I gotta make the most of it. Alright, seeing none, uh, without objection, we're adjourned, thank you. Miss Bibi, you, here's your turn.
Okay, I'm gonna call to order the Sparks Redevelopment Agency Meeting of July 27th, 2020 with a roll call. Chairperson Bibi?
Here.
Agency members Abbott?
You're muted.
Yeah, I was trying to get there, I hear.
Lawson?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Smith is absent. Dare?
Here, and I just want to offer our young, uh, Donald Abbott some advice or help with his, like, technology.
I'm not being a good millennial today, I'm sorry, you guys.
Chief Legal Officer Adams?
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Croods?
Here.
Do we have a quorum, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, moving on to item three, public comment. Do we have any public comment?
And at this time, if there is anybody who would like to make public comment, please press star nine from your telephone or indicate your desire to speak by raising your hand, um, on your computer or your Zoom app.
And I am showing none.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, item four, 4.1, approval of the agenda, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve?
Yes. Uh, motion by agency member Lawson, second by agency member Dare, um, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 5.1, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks Redevelopment Agency Meeting of June 22nd, 2020, do I have any corrections, additions, or a motion to approve?
Move to approve?
I have a motion to approve by agency member Anderson, do I have a second?
Second?
I have a second by agency member Lawson. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item 6.1, business items. Consideration and possible acceptance of the report of the claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers for the period of June 10th, 2020 through July 13th, 2020. I have a motion to approve?
Move.
I have the most, motion to approve by agency member Dare, a second by agency member Lawson. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Everybody aye?
All aye.
Okay. Okay, motion carries unanimously. Um, item 7.1, comments from the public. Do we have any comments from the public, Madam Clerk?
And if anybody is wishing to speak at this time, press star nine from your telephone or raise your hand from your computer or Zoom app. And I'm showing none, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item 7.2, comments from the agency and Chief Administration Officer, do I have any comments? Any of you, or Neil? Seeing none, we're adjourned, thank you guys.
Thank you.
See you later.
Neil, will you get your call?
Yes, thank you.
Be careful, Donald, call me if you need help.